...of our students, and as a reminder, we are still facing a shortage of bus drivers and van drivers, and First Student is hiring, so you can view the opportunities at workatfirst.com. Thank you, bus drivers.
National School Social Work Week is coming up, March the 4th through the 8th, to celebrate school social workers and appreciate their work in helping students achieve academic success. All of our RPS schools have social workers on staff, and they affect the lives of our students in impactful ways every day, promoting student academic success by reducing social, emotional, economic, and environmental barriers to learning. RPS social workers work with students one-on-one, in small groups, or in the classroom to develop problem-solving, conflict resolution, and decision-making skills. They help students deal with difficult or crisis situations and improve interpersonal relationships with their peers. They help address barriers to school attendance. Additionally, RPS social workers provide a link between school, home, and the community, connecting students and families to school and community-based resources for health, mental health, housing, food, and nutrition. We would like to express our thanks on behalf of the district to all of our Rochester Public Schools social workers.
And finally, families, educators, school leaders, and public education advocates representing more than 10 million members across the country will join together February 26th through March 1st to celebrate Public Schools Week 2024. Public Schools Week brings together all of us to shine a light on local public schools and share the stories of the positive things happening in classrooms and school buildings nationwide. As we know very well, the teaching and learning in our Rochester Public Schools positively impact students and families, the neighborhoods and communities they live in, and our nation as a whole. With commitment, creativity, and critical thinking, our educators and school leaders continue to provide welcoming and engaging learning opportunities for our children. Governor Walz will be issuing a proclamation regarding Public Schools Week in Minnesota, and you can participate in the celebration by writing an email, or sending a note, or sharing an appreciation on social media to say thank you to a dedicated teacher, staff, or administrator who is hashtag here for the kids, keeping our students learning and growing this year. The next item on our agenda is board member committee updates. Does any board member have updates from their committees since last meeting, or anything to share?
Director Mark. Thank you. I recently attended a meeting of the Community Curriculum and Instruction Advisory Committee, CCIAC, and they meet in tandem with the Special Education Advisory Committee. Both of these groups educate people who show up, and anyone can come. We have students, we have grandparents, we have interested people, members of the community. Educate them about some of the initiatives that Rochester Public Schools are working on, and then they get feedback. People are able to learn a little bit, ask questions, raise concerns, and then discuss what we are doing to help all of our kids succeed. In particular, at this last meeting, the new science standards, which are currently being worked on, were discussed, and there's going to be an exciting new approach to teaching science, where students become the researchers. They find out what scientists do, and they do that. They make connections between different fields of science, and the science that they learn in school, and what's going on in their lives and in the world. We also learned about the search for the new literacy curriculum, which is really exciting, and there were samples of the Minnesota-approved curricula that people were able to look through. That sparked some really interesting conversation, and people are excited about that. We also learned that the formerly called Gifted and Talented Program is now going to be called the Accelerated...
Accelerated Learning.
That's what you just said.
Advanced.
Advanced, sorry. Advanced Learning Services, for a number of reasons, which all make complete sense. Now, we are committed to continuing to provide honors programs and the kinds of services that all of our learners, including those who learn quickly and who need to go deeper and faster. And I think it's a great... Both committees are really important, I think, for the public to learn and to be able to share their perspective.
Director Mark.
I have two things. I'll start with the legislative update. The first week of the legislative session began on February 12th, and I have the first week's kind of summary for what's going on. This is a policy and bonding year. There is no supplemental budget planned at this time. If there is any, it will be a small one. The governor's budget forecast will be out on February 28th. The current estimate of a $2.4 billion surplus has already been accounted for from the 2023 session, where the legislature, as you remember, dedicated a lot of money to education and other areas. Erin Murphy is the new Majority Leader in the Senate. The House and Senate Education Chairs are the same. The House and Senate are hearing roughly three policies per chamber each day. Out of 550 bills the House is considering, 86 are related to education. The Senate is considering 439 bills, 53 of which are related to education. So some of these bills are not necessarily in the education section, but they may be in another department that impacts education. One of those is the free breakfast and lunch bill, which needs some fixing. Right now, it's laid up in the Health and Safety Committee, and right now, there aren't enough votes to get that out of committee. So this year will be primarily a fix-it year in terms of decisions that they made last year that need to be tweaked for this coming year.
Do you have any news?
I do. This one's really fun. About two weeks ago, shortly after our last regular meeting, I had the opportunity, and quite frankly, the joy, I can't believe I'm saying this, to visit a math class at Century High School, geometry teacher, and I was really intrigued with how different math is taught than it was back before, you know, color was invented when I was in school, where instead of having the students sit at their desks to do math problems, she has whiteboards around the perimeter of the room, and the students stand there in groups, and they're assigned particular problems to work at the board, and then she goes around and helps, you know, the groups if they have questions or problems. I think it's really great because she could see right away the work that they're doing on the board, but one of the things that's a really big benefit is because this is something that's new to them, to be doing schoolwork standing at a board, they can't use their cellphones. Whereas if they're sitting and working, you know, here it is, and why not check Facebook or, you know, whatever social media they are liking to check? So she was really clear in her instruction, and I told her that, gosh, I wish I had had her when I took geometry back in the Dark Ages. She was great.
Any other reports? And I want to remind everybody that this Friday, February 23rd, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m., the school board will be hosting a listening session and co-hosting it with the Alliance of Chicanos, Hispanics, Hispanics, and Latin Americans, or Ochla, and it will be at Riverside Elementary, and it is open to the public, and everyone is welcome. And in addition to our listening session, there are also going to be some resource tables available from Rochester Public Library, Juntos, Community Health, the Minnesota Department of Health, and other community partners, so we hope to see you there. Items 5.1 through 5.11 is our consent agenda. Would any board member like any item removed from the consent agenda for separate consideration?
Move approval.
Second. It has been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The consent agenda has been approved. And now we can move on to our first focus topic. Item 6.1 is the Middle School Alternative Learning Center Plan. Superintendent Pecel.
Thank you, Chair Nathan, and board members. I want to invite our middle school team to come on up here while I do my pre-ramble a little bit. The strategic plan that has been guiding our work in Rochester Public Schools, as many of you know, was developed through a year-long intensive process, the first year that I was here in Rochester, the 2021-2022 school year. And the initiatives that are now known as the building blocks, which are on our website and in the back of the room, were the simplest distillation of that plan. There are a number of things that are really prominent in the plan that didn't get their own blocks, frankly, because the number of blocks was already 15, and it wouldn't have worked symmetrically. But one of the priorities that will impact a relatively smaller number of students, but in a deep way, is the one that we're here to talk about tonight. And as is the case with a lot of strategic planning processes, where this idea originated was not, we need to have a middle school alternative learning center. It was, we have a subset of kids who are struggling in our comprehensive middle schools. This was before Dakota had opened, but we knew that we had relatively large middle schools, somewhat reduced based upon what we, the board achieved by opening Dakota, but relatively big schools that serve many students really well. But it was very clear to people who provided input in the strategic planning process that we had a group of kids at the middle grades who needed what a group of students have in Rochester at the high school level, which is truly an alternative form of learning, not just getting out of the traditional high schools. Anyone who's been at our high school ALC knows they have a coherent curricular vision. It is different not just in size, it's different in schedule, it's different in the rhythm, the culture, and in the instructional models. And so as we embark on what the board has already approved as part of our attendance options redesign, we are aiming to create a counterpart at the middle school level. This is very much a work in progress, as board members are aware. Some deep thinking has gone into it, but much work needs to be further done. And as I turn it over to the team and ask them to first just introduce each of themselves, and then we'll turn to the PowerPoint, I just want to articulate the tension that exists in any school endeavor to create targeted programming for students who have unique needs. And the tension is not to have it be separate, apart, and less high-quality than the programming that we're privileged to offer to all kids. And it's just important to articulate that tension because it's one we're all aware of, and certainly in terms of this effort, we are committed not to have occur. There needs to be, and you're going to hear in a moment, a vision of the type of student that would benefit from this programming. There needs to be dedicated educators who are called and prepared to work with those students, and there needs to be very careful system support, because what can happen is that programs that start with good intentions can become the place you send those kids, because I don't want them in my school, my class. I'm confident that's not the direction that we're headed, but you need to articulate that tension. One of the things I was surprised to learn in the work that we did in the initial planning for the effort you're going to hear about, is that at the middle grades level, there are actually, as far as we could find, no other examples in Minnesota of a standalone area learning center, meaning physically apart, from a traditional middle school. Most of those programs are within a traditional middle school. That is definitely not our plan for next year. The program will remain in what we all still, I think, of as the Frydell Building, and the vision is ultimately to continue to have it be a physically distinct space. But that's quite different than what most other districts, to the extent that we've been able to find, all other districts in Minnesota are doing, and it's quite different than the high school level, where most high school area learning centers, or alternative learning centers, are physically separate from the high school. So one of the interesting differences, and I think important differences to keep in mind as we go into this planning, so I want to thank you all for joining us, and then maybe we can just start out, Shelley, with some introductions, and then I'll turn it over to however you all are going to give us an overview of the discussion. Thanks.
I'm Shelley Beasley, and I've been at Wright Fit for two years. I teach social studies, literacy, and PE.
Travis Bean. Sorry. I am the Assistant Principal at Middle School at Wright Fit.
Kristi Palmby. This is my fourth year at Middle School Wright Fit, and I teach literacy, social studies, and science.
And I'm Andy Crox, the Director of Finance, and I've been on the team, helping with the financial portion of starting this program, both the revenue and expense side, so here to just answer any of those questions that might come up.
And I think before I turn over, I should, it's probably, for people who haven't been following along, errant in not pointing out, in creating a middle school ALC, or Alternative Learning Center, we are actually sunsetting the program that has been called Wright Fit, and that has been funded by a separate funding source, as Andy may describe, if board members are interested, and that has had a different vision, one that I think they've achieved with striking success, for a group of our students, and transitioning to a different programmatic model and a different funding source, but with a lot of continuity in the kind of educational supports and social, emotional, mental health supports that we're providing to kids. So that's why you're hearing from the Wright Fit team, they will now be the Middle School Area Alternative Learning Center. I keep saying area, because some places say area, because they don't want to use the term "alternative." I don't think there's anything wrong with the term "alternative," and maybe they'll come up with a much more creative name, as we get into it anyway, so thank you again. Let's jump in.
Superintendent Pecel, members of the board, thank you. We are ecstatic to be here. This has been a four-year passion project for some of us, and we've had a couple of staff members come on in the last two years who have thrown themselves into the work as well, so thank you. We've been waiting for this day a long time, and we are excited. So I think Superintendent Pecel was just talking about this, because a lot of people don't know, what is a middle school ALC, and he kind of covered this.
I do that to everybody. Don't fail me. They will all tell you. I say whatever they were going to say, and so, but now you give them the real thing.
So I'll just...
I don't do it knowingly. No, say it again.
An ALC technically is an area learning center, and that's usually because it provides supports for a large area and multiple schools. When you're a city of the first class, then you're not necessarily providing those supports to other districts. So we really do talk about it as an alternative learning center, because that is our focus and our framework and the direction we're heading, so we use them interchangeably. And I did want to talk about Wright Fit. I know there's not a, there's not a lot probably known about Wright Fit, but it has been around for five and a half years. We've been there for four years, and if you don't know about this program, we can have a conversation at some point, but we were at the Boys and Girls Club in two classrooms that the district rented for us for three of those years, and it was, it was some of the most fun I've had in education, as we figured out how to maneuver through this program that really didn't have a lot of structure or kind of vision to it at the time. And I think that's where the middle school ALC idea came out of, was what are we going to do? We know these students need a place to go, but how are we going to sustain it? And that's how we got to where we are right now. And I know I only have like 15 minutes, but I really talk a lot, so I'm going to, I may need to be reminded, and they do too. So this truly does serve an educational purpose, but it also serves a financial purpose as well, and really, that's Andy's expertise. I don't know if you want to talk about that, but there is some money that we can kind of get out of doing this.
I know you have a slide, so maybe we can wait till that point, but I will just tell you that with the ALC model, those students generate ADM, just like they would if they were in the traditional setting. The one difference, though, is in the ALC, when they're enrolled at the ALC, those dollars they generate have to be used only and solely for that purpose. And so what we've been able to do is, through our other ALC programs, both the site, some after-school programs, and of course, summer school, is we've created some additional resources, because those dollars, they, again, those ADM, the ADM generates the revenue, and if we don't spend it all, we're able to carry it over into future years. And so the intended, and I don't want to get too far ahead of you, but the intended funding for this particular, excuse me, the intended funding right now is some of those reserve dollars, pardon me. And so I know you have more, but, and we may have some additional questions, but I have a few more things to say, but I'll let you get back to your slides.
There are some of it right there. I got ahead of myself, so. So really, what's happened here in the district is, without the mid-level ALC, we've seen the middle school students who have done extended programs and have done summer programs, we've seen that extra funding go to other sources instead of necessarily back to, not necessarily back to, the middle school alternative learning where it should go. So now, the funding will come back to the middle school students who are bringing in that funding, if that makes sense. I apologize. I'm clicking. Oh, there we go. So right now, this is kind of, this is the big push for me. I found this out two years ago, and Superintendent Pecel's been very supportive of this, as soon as we kind of realized this, that right now, we're out of compliance, according to the statute that you can see up on the TV there. If you have an ALC at the high school level, you must have it at the middle school level in some way, and for a while, we didn't. A lot of the ways that we do have those middle school ALCs, Superintendent Pecel already went over, it's really a school within a school model in many districts throughout the state. The difference is, the one thing we've seen with our kids is that most of them are terrified to go into those big buildings. So we find a lot of them at home, with parents trying to figure out what are the options, what are next steps, or we find them scared to death walking into those buildings, and a lot of times hiding in the bathrooms and the hallways. So that's why I'm a huge proponent of keeping this as a standalone program, because truthfully, we've seen kids that haven't been to school in months walk through our doors and walk through them every single day. Not sure what I'm doing wrong.
Or you can help out.
Am I just impatient? You can go one more. So we did organize a mission and a vision as we progressed through Wright Fit, so we did have something that was guiding us along the way, and it was very important to us to create a mission that we think encapsulates the entire school, and that mission was to provide a learning environment that focused on meeting the needs of the whole student. We get a lot of our students who not only need academic support, but a lot of them need mental health support, a lot of them need the basic support that they may not be getting at home as well. A lot of our students don't get sleep at night. They may be hungry, so that's why we're talking about the whole student here. And our vision, again, draft vision, because we don't have an official one yet, but we really do want to be the best middle school alternative learning center in the country. We'll start with the state, but then we want to get to... Student population right now, first thing I want to say is that our traditional schools do an amazing job. They serve as, most of the students, I don't know what the percentage would be, 95% of the students have a great experience going through the traditional schools. We are there to help out that percentage that's not having their needs met for whatever reason that is. Right now, as you guys know, we are working on a robust MTSS system throughout the district. We hope that in working on that MTSS system, we become one of those tier-three opportunities for students that need it. As you can see, some of the identifiers we use to get students to come into our doors, academic performance below grade level, we do have students right now that are reading and doing math at second-grade levels, coming in in sixth, seventh, eighth grade. Physical or emotional abuse, mental health concerns, recently in transition or homeless, withdrawn from school or chronically truant. You can imagine how many students fall under that category, or those categories, so the potential for servicing students is very high. Based on our current model and the students we've had over the last four years, we know that we are going to get a lot of students with a history of trauma and mental health concerns, which is why you'll see, when we talk about what our population is at the moment, you'll see that it's a fairly low number, because of the work that needs to go in, supporting these students every day. So what does a day look like? What does the core school year day program look like? The one thing that an ALC must have is a continual learning plan. So every student that walks in the door must have a plan that focuses on goals, either the social realm or the academic realm, and those are updated yearly and gone through with the students a lot during the year. We are really going to focus on literacy and numeracy. We have a lot of students that, again, coming in at a second-grade level. We also have gifted students, so we are really, really focusing on hammering the two areas that students, we know students need to move forward with their education. We are going to be installing a capstone project. We want students to have a reason to come to school, and have a goal, and feel good about working towards something. And that capstone project, I think you'll find, is going to be valuable to the city of Rochester, as it's going to be tied closely with the community itself. And I'll talk about the exploratory options. Right now, we do morning meetings every day, and these two are two of the best at them. So they bring students around that maybe wouldn't talk to each other in a traditional building, and they talk about things every single morning with their students in class, and it really, really builds community. A legacy course for new students, we want our students that are there today to provide the framework and let the students coming in know how we do things at the middle school ALC, and that'll be important. Strong partnerships with our community and our high schools. I'm excited to reach out to the high schools and start a possible mentorship program with them. I think that's something that we haven't been able to tap into yet at Wright Fit, but I think now, moving to the ALC, we can, we'll be able to reach out and do a lot more things. All-encompassing mental health supports, we really believe that we have a lot of those in place right now, and we see that continuing moving forward. Right now, we do have life skills classes for all students that talk about mental health, talk about just the day-to-day knowledge that students need to have to maneuver through their education. We do, we have very flexible scheduling options, so we have students that might only be able to do a half-day for a while, might only be able to do two hours a day for a while, and being smaller, we are really able to work with those students to get them back into the building at their pace. We also have students that, we get in the door, and they're extremely nervous to go into this class or that class. I can think of one right now that Ms. Palmby is working really hard with to get her into the classes, and I think today she...
She stayed in two whole classes.
Stayed in two whole classes, so that is a tremendous win. So those are the kind of scheduling options that we are very flexible with. Right now, we do have an extraordinarily high level of family engagement. A lot of these families are people who maybe didn't have great experiences at the traditional schools, but they come into our building, and I know they feel like this is another chance for their student. So we do have a really high level of family engagement, and again, I'll look at Ms. Palmby here. She runs some of our family engagement nights, and it's a great time. We have movie night... We have movie night and I don't know how many we had at the last movie night, but yeah, it's, it's wonderful. And I'm gonna actually turn it over to, to Ms. Palmby for a little bit to talk about one of our amazing community partnerships that, that we do have going at Right Fit.
I'm gonna put a quick plug in. If any of you are interested, we do have a family engagement night happening on February 28th at our building from 4:30 to 5:30, if any of you want to come and join, that'd be great. Like Travis had mentioned, we do share a very strong partnership with Mayo and the Inside Out program. Zebra fish, if any of you have known about that. I, as a science teacher, have worked very closely with the team at Mayo throughout the last three years. Last year, we worked very closely to create some mental health modules, incorporating the zebra fish into it and helping the students learn through that firsthand engagement. The curriculum that comes with Inside Out is not just academic. It is also very strongly social emotional skills that our students get with it, get along with it. And I think it's very beneficial to them because not only are they gaining those academic content through science and all of the experiments that we do, they are learning communication skills, how to talk to each other, how to talk to adults, how to talk like a scientist. They are working on teamwork skills. They are able to work in small groups and maneuver the different aspects of, okay, it's your turn to use the microscope this time, or it's my turn, and trying to figure out how to work with each other. Critical thinking skills, problem-solving skills. They're learning compassion and understanding for people and animals. We've had many conversations on animal cruelty and discussion on, is it okay to use the zebra fish? Is it not? And the Mayo, the Inside Out people from Mayo have been very helpful in those conversations, talking about all the legal aspects of it. And so, there's lots of deeper learning that happens with our Inside Out connection. And to see how our students have grown over the last three years with not only their academics surrounding it, but personally with their leadership skills. I had a student, one of my eighth graders, run my science class with the sixth graders because he has done Inside Out for the last three years and he loves it. And he, I was like, you need to teach this. This is, this is your opportunity, you can do it. And he did wonderful. Also, our students feel valued and empowered through this process. Many times, they get to decide their own experiments or things that they would like to work on or test. And it also allows them to make those real-world connections. Last year, we did an experiment with the zebra fish to see how they were affected by different forms of smokings, like smoke, so we did vape juice or all of the different vaping substances. And so, the students could see, yeah, this is what happens to the zebra fish when you're exposed to it. So, how does it affect our bodies? So, the connection there has been really good to see with all of the students. And I hope that that continues because I love that program very much and so do the students.
That's our plug for Inside Out. I will try to speed things up here because I know we're, we're talking a lot. But two things that have to go with an ALC are an extended day program and a year program. So, the extended day program is going to provide academic support for students as well as exploratory opportunities for students. We're looking right now at partnering with the Boys and Girls Club as we look at a 21st Century grant. So, so we are working towards putting that in place. Summer program, I believe it, it might be the next summer that that's gonna be put into place. But again, we're looking at five weeks of academic support and, and community involvement that we can provide for, for our students. Deeper learning focus, another cool thing that, that we have going on at Right Fit and Ms. Beasley is gonna talk a little bit about this.
I'll try to hurry. So, we had two deeper learning projects this year that we're doing. One was in the fall, one's gonna be in the spring. And what's great about our program is that we are small. And so, for our mastery, part of deeper learning, it's been so cool to see our teachers, our, do some collaboration, our math, our social studies, our literacy, our science come together and be able to make this a project that our, have, has just helped our kids be well-rounded in this whole project and have say in it. Like, our big question was, how can we help our community? And, and going forward then, how can we inspire our kids to be leaders in their community? And how can they carry this on as they go out into the world? And so, we decided to, one of the things that our kids love at school and is very comforting to them are their blankets. And so, we decided to make blankets for our, the PICU unit at Mercy. Mercy, Mayo. Mercy's in Sioux City where I came from. Anyway, so, we, so that was our mastery part of it. And then our identity part was kind of the, the best part because so many of our students come and they have a sense of identity, but maybe they've never been leaders. And so, it was so interesting to see how so many of them stepped up into a leadership role during parts of this blanket project. They had to do in life skills, price comparisons. And some of them were helping others do this. And some that you would have never thought that would step up into the leadership role of helping the others. And then, in math, they found the area and perimeter cost to each blanket. In literacy, they wrote notes to the kids in the PICU unit. Someone came and spoke to them from PICU and they had already come up with questions, thoughtful questions to ask. And then, cutting the fabric in science, just doing measurements and things like that for science. So, it was, it was just exciting to see them also carry this forward. And like he talked about in our circle time in the morning, my eighth graders just excited to, to talk more about volunteering someday and carrying things like this forward. And knowing that some of these kids, like I said, the majority of our kids come to us having sat in the bathroom during lunch because they couldn't go into a lunchroom. And seeing them work all together, seeing them be proud of this project that they did. And just seeing them step up and be proud of themselves. And in the creativity part, they picked out the fabric. They had a say in what we did as the project. You know, just all of this. And it, it just was an amazing thing to see them work through and, and we're really, really proud of them.
I think we have forty blankets ready, forty?
Yeah.
Ready for delivery, so we're excited to, to deliver those as well.
Are the students gonna deliver them?
Yes. Yep. So, we had, you can see in this picture, we had students go out and, and help with the fabric purchasing. This one is how they figured out. That's Cunio there, he's one of our taller students. We figured that's probably the max. So, how do we, how do we move this forward and how do we be self-sustaining? We do have a three-year plan for that. Next year, we are going to stay in the Frydale Building and we're going to stay pretty close to our current numbers, which right now, I think we have forty-four students total. And we're adding another one on Monday, so we'll be at forty-five. This is the largest that, that Right Fit's ever been. So, we're excited about that and we're still moving forward, so that's good. Year two, that'll be something that Superintendent Pekel, we'll partner with him, working on, kinda where he sees this as where we're going. But I, I think we'd like to be up to ninety students and, and increase staffing. And I, I think as you, as you look at us increasing the student numbers, what Dr. Pekel said that's so important is we can take a large number of students and run a high-functioning school with the students that need the support we provide. It's difficult for a large number of students to come in that need other supports but get, but get kind of put into the, the Right Fit or middle school ALC program, if that makes sense. Our resources aren't endless and, and we are limited in some scope. But we know, we know the kids that we are having success with. So, by year three, we are increasing enrollment to a hundred and twenty students. Again, plan to add another teacher. And that should be the number that helps us be self-sufficient. Right, Andy?
That is the plan, yes.
Couple, two more slides and then we're good. But what are, what are some obstacles that we see? Well, what is the interest? And, and all that we know right now is, is the experiences that we've had, which is the interest is very high for this. And if you hadn't heard of Right Fit, I think there's, there's a reason because we couldn't talk a lot about it because we didn't have room for what we, what we think is going to be a, a pretty big influx of interest in the school itself. We have not branded or promoted Right Fit a whole lot just through the other middle schools and we are seeing, seeing it grow quite a bit. And then, again, kind of bringing back to the students, getting the right students there is going to be an obstacle. So, we are working hard on the referral process. And then, do we have enough money to cover the costs for the supports that these students need? Think we're going to, but that is certainly an obstacle that we need to talk about. How do we know that we're successful? I think number one is we are able to accurately identify the students that are gonna thrive in this program. It would be great when we're up to a hundred and twenty students to have all a hundred and twenty students being successful in this program. Success for a lot of these students is gonna be measured by the FASBRIDGE and, and other academic indicators. And how are we doing there? How are we doing with a student that, that, that hasn't seen growth for a few years? And we know right now that we are seeing growth from most students in Right Fit on, on those indicators. And culture, is it a place that staff and students want to go to daily? Are they happy to walk in the doors? Do they feel safe? Do they feel comfortable? Are they connected to the adults in the building? That's how we'll know we're successful. Questions?
Board members, questions? Dr. Martin?
Thank you so much. This is so exciting. And I know it's great for the students that you welcome in and it's really good for all students and, and teachers because if those kids stayed at their regular schools with the needs that they have and the time that they need and deserve, that means that those teachers don't have as much time to spend with the general population. Two quick questions. Can students stay in, will they be able to stay in the ALC program for more than three years? And secondly, do you have a vision or a plan about what happens after they finish eighth grade in this program?
Sure. So, your first question was can they stay in for more than three years?
If they're really struggling, can they stay there?
Like in high, like going to high school after?
So, I, I think right now, the, the transition would be generally to the high school ALC.
Okay.
Fair question and, and one to talk about at some point. But what we've done with our eighth grade students is worked really hard to, to work on what that transition piece looks like. And for most of our students, they do go to the high school ALC. We do take a trip over there and, and we tour. We, we have some that, that go into the traditional high schools and do fine. But most, most are enjoying their time at the high school ALC.
If I could just interject, Dr. Martin, it's a great point. We, I, I talked at the outset and you've gotten a glimpse here of what building targeted programming requires. And we talked about the importance and the team highlighted the importance of clear criteria for entrance. One of the things that often is overlooked is clear criteria for exit and transition. And this applies not just to this programming. It also, I see Natalia in the back, it applies to our multilingual programming. It applies to anything that's a targeted support. Sometimes the student remains in that support, but we want to make sure we have not just a, a, a exit criteria, but a transition plan so that when that student is moving on. So, it's something that when you're building something and there's so much to do to build the content, that can be overlooked without sufficient attention to that building on support. So, I really appreciate you, you flagging that. It's, it's, I could easily see that being a good challenge to encounter as this increasingly serves more students needing to actually be more flexible in the thinking about students either remaining there or in the transition plan. Because we also know our high school alternative learning center is so successful, it has significant waiting lists. And that's a continual challenge in working with our high school kids.
Director Cook?
Yeah, well, I'll, also very grateful for the presentation and for the work that, that's going into meeting the needs of these students, especially as we look ahead to what the future needs of a middle school ALC is gonna look like. This is, this is very timely and helpful. One thing that we didn't hear about in this presentation was special education. And I'm just wondering, kind of broad strokes, what is the relationship or the role of special education services for, for the Right Fit students currently and/or for the future ALC as, as it's kind of envisioned so far?
Sure. So, we, we do have special education supports. Right now, we have one teacher. So, we, we are able to, to service a number of students. And, and really, our number of students on IEPs is, is pretty high right now. It is higher than the, the percentage at the traditional schools. So, I think moving forward, we'd like to see that number or that percentage around what the traditional schools are at and make sure that we have the staffing that can support the needs of those students, if that answers your question.
That is helpful. I guess what I was, I, I didn't articulate very well is, is the eligibility for special education services, and, and because you, you mentioned anxiety perhaps as part of what helps you identify a student that you think would thrive in the, the Right Fit environment, is eligibility for special education services part of how students are identified? Or is that just its own separate thing?
That's, that is its own separate thing. We are a general education setting. So, we, we are not considered a special education setting. And I think, I think that does confuse people sometimes. And, you know, you hear things like setting three or setting four. And we are not that. We are a general education setting with special education supports.
And you can't be. I mean, the, the ALC can't, cannot be. And now, we have, it's been, I mean, Travis was choosing his words carefully. Since I've been here, I've seen the percentage of students with disabilities at Right Fit grow significantly. And I've said, wait a minute, this is kind of becoming a special ed programming, but it's, it's a program, it's a general ed programming. Now, as your question suggests, Director Cook, there's a convergence of need there between kids who may have a, a, a mental health challenge or an experiential challenge and a disability. So, we have to really think this through quite carefully as we go forward.
And then, thank you, that's really helpful. The last thing I was wondering about, because another one of the areas that, that you looked at for students that to target or identify or recruit into the Right Fit were students that had chronic truancy, or that's my words, not yours. But do you have a sense of the attendance rate or the incidences of truancy at incidences of truancy at RightFit now?
Yeah, I, I guess I don't have numbers for you on that, but certainly we can talk about, I know you're coming to visit.
Sure, okay, yeah.
But I think what you'd see is, is we are seeing growth, so, or we are seeing students improve, if that makes sense. From, from not going to school to coming to school. Would they be legally truant? We know that that's seven unexcused absences on seven different days, so we have a lot of that, but we are seeing them get back into the schools, so.
Yeah, no, that's excellent. Thank you.
Director Martin?
Okay, so this is, this is more of a nuts and bolts question. I think as everybody's aware, we've had a attendance redesign area, so how will these students be impacted for transportation next year? Do they get busing now from their residences and will that continue?
They, they do. They, they have vans that pick them up unless they're in walking distance.
Director McLaughlin?
Sort of related to some of the other questions, can you talk a little bit about, it seems like some of the tension might be with the other schools that are feeding into your program, either middle school or even I suspect fifth grade? Can you talk about the messaging that your dialogue you're, you're having with those programs and how that's going?
Well, I think, I think getting this through past and, and knowing now that this is something that's going to move forward really helps us with that structure as well. Because it, it has been difficult. It, it has been, well, I will tell you that, that the other middle school ALCs that we've visited or high school ALCs and middle school ALCs within them that we've visited, it's, they all say the same thing and that's the, the referral process because we know, we know that it's an issue because there are really tough students and you get to a point at those larger schools where you're not sure what to do anymore. So the messaging, the messaging is beginning to, to become more structured, I guess I could say. We are working on a plan to make sure we have that in place next year, so it's crystal clear.
Thank you. Director Garcia?
I feel like your response to that maybe answered my question because it, it sounds to me like I am looking for more of a concrete, like what is the threshold of eligibility and what might be the exit strategy? But it sounds like I think we're looking for that right now. So I guess, and maybe this is just food for thought, is if, you know, if I'm a parent, in what ways would you support me in recognizing like we've tried a 504, my kid's on an IP or whatever and what, how would I want to keep them in the traditional school setting versus when would RightFit or when would the ALC be more appropriate for them? And is this something that's like finite in time? Like could I try this for a few months, get my kid back on track and then transition them? You know, like what does that sort of look like?
So I'll answer your last question first. We are a fluid program. So we do, we work on transitions continuously. We have transitions with Prairie Care. We have transitions to the other middle schools happening quite a bit. So yes, students can come to us for a few months. What we find honestly though is that students don't want to leave. They, they enjoy the environment and, and they enjoy the success they're finding. So we don't have a lot of students that, that end up going back.
Right, so I imagine you getting to your a hundred and twenty students isn't going to be difficult.
I, I don't think so.
Okay. And that was, you kind of reached onto another thing. So like if, if my kid was at Prairie Care, even if it was like partial hospitalization, like what is transportation looking like for them? Is that something that I am responsible for as a parent to transport my kid? Is that something that the district helps with?
I work, I work closely and, and our teachers work closely with parents every single day. I will say, I, I don't think there's a, there's a school in the district that, that works as closely with their parents as we do just because we, we have forty-five students. So every plan there would be different and I would certainly be walking with that parent on, on what that plan looks like.
Sure.
And I think that's the hard part about the referrals too. Because as we, every kid has their own story. So getting to the bottom of that story is really difficult. So what are the key identifiers? And how do we know that this kid's going to be successful or not successful is very difficult until they are in, in that environment.
Yeah, it seems like there's a lot of maybe like Venn diagramming of like these kids would be, yeah, these kids would be appropriate in either program, but maybe it's like family preference. And I know that there are a number of mental health supports in the community that are like outpatient programs and like in my head now that I'm learning this, I think, oh, well, if I'm telling a family that my recommendation is that they do this particular program, but they can't make it work because it's right in the middle of the day and of course the kid would be at school, now we can start telling them once I guess you figure out what the messaging is like. And if you are in the Rochester Public School District, you could go to this RightFit or ALC program and also attend this specific like mental health program in the community.
And I, I think it's, yeah, I was at Mayo High School for a long time as an assistant principal and one thing that, that I struggled with there was the transition for students coming in from Prairie Care, just because you're so big and you have so many students, it's really hard to keep up with that transition plan. And, and I do think as a smaller environment, that is one of our, our key strengths is helping students transition from a Prairie Care or from a Fernbrook Day program.
Yeah, excellent. I, every time somebody from Phoenix or the high school ALC comes, I'm like, that's where I would want to work if I was a teacher and so I'm including you all in that. Thank you for your work.
Director Barlow?
It's good to see in some of your photos, the bicycles in the background and how the students firm RightFit put those together for some of our other programs. I'm not asking you for specific numbers, but are the majority of your students male, female? In terms of what, and I will plan on visiting, so you may not even have to answer the question. I'll see for myself, but just off quickly, are the majority, what are the majority of your students like?
I think we have a really good mix. We're about fifty-fifty gender-wise and we have students from all sorts of backgrounds. Very diverse, yeah, thank you.
Director McLaughlin?
When you were talking about working on their belonging and staff belonging in the schools, that kind of thing, do you measure that with the panorama like other schools do? And how does your fluidity impact that type of data?
Yeah, we do and we also, it's hard because the panorama throws us in with some other schools, so we don't actually get our own data from that.
Can we?
I think it's too, is it too small? You'd be easily identifiable.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure if we can or we can't, but we, we do survey our students quite often. So I, I, and does the fluidity impact that? I think bringing in new students is always, can always be a, there's kind of a, a balance there. We brought in two students today and it was a great day. And they did well. And sometimes, sometimes it takes a couple of weeks for a student to kind of get in the, the rhythm of things. And that can, that can change how they're feeling about the place for sure.
And I guess the reason I'm having a question is you could have kids that are there who never get that panorama because they're in and out and then they might be doing great and you never capture that.
And just to piggyback off, sorry.
No, that's okay.
Just to piggyback off of what Travis is seeing, because of our size, we are able to make stronger connections with our students. Not that other schools don't make connections with our students, but we have the time to make those one-on-one connections in our morning meetings and any type of downtime or free time that we have. So I think we get a better feel of what the environment is like for the students. Because we have those relationships, they're very open and honest with us about how they're feeling. If something happens and a student tells us they don't feel safe in this instant, we are automatically right on it because they feel comfortable having that conversation.
Right. I'm sorry. Do you keep data separately then about things like that, you know, more anecdotal? Or is that just part of your normal work?
That's just part of our normal, normal work right now.
And I think that would be helpful to the board though to see that, to see if it's different in that environment long-term as we're measuring success compared to the other schools.
It's interesting too because we're so small that we run on a text chain for the day. And so it's very easy to say, Yuki's struggling, Ms. Carsons, can you pull her? And, you know, she'll be at my door to pull Yuki and talk, you know, so I mean it's, it's very so student-oriented, you know, if it's just very mental health oriented. And so, and like I see my eighth graders four times a day. So I'm very in touch with what's going on with my eighth graders. And seventh graders like three times a day. So I mean, it's very, you know.
We're able to triage quickly, very quickly.
That's good to hear.
I, I really appreciated Director Barlow's question on the demographics and one of the things I'll just ask my colleagues to help, whenever we have a report on a school or something, we probably should provide that to the board. On the, it's a snapshot in time and with a highly mobile population like the current RightFit and that will be true of our ALC, that snapshot always shifts a bit, but as of October one, three point eight percent of students there are identified as American Indian, seven point seven percent as Asian, thirty point eight percent as Black African American, seven point seven percent as Hispanic or Latino and forty-two point three percent as white and seven point seven percent as two or more races. As Travis said, pretty, very mixed by gender, fifteen point four percent were identified as a multi-language learner. Fifty-three point eight percent received special education services, eighty point eight percent qualified for free or reduced-priced meals and fifteen point four percent were experiencing homelessness. So a great concentration of, of need there that you all have been doing great work with.
Well, let's get to the sustainability part for which Andy is here. Thank you for your answers before the meeting about where the budget is and where it's going, but I think that's important for us to hear that this isn't a pie in the sky funding notion in our face of, you know, the budget challenges we talk about. So can you talk about that a little bit?
Well, absolutely. No, there's been a lot of planning. Before I get started, I just want to mention one thing. Getting involved with this particular work group or dis group was one of the first things that I did when I, I started with the district. And I was so absolutely impressed immediately by the dedication and commitment that this team had in development of this plan. I was, I was just struck by the, the amount of compassion and just forward-thinking and focus they had, so I applaud them for all their hard work. They've done a tremendous job to get where they are in this plan. Now to the funding, kind of the, the nuts and bolts, the boring part. I mean, they have the fun job, I have the, I have what I have. Pardon my cold by the way. So again, we've identified a funding source of reserve dollars that are generated by our other alternative programs, both the ALC, targets and targeted services, after-school programs, summer school programs, where the funding has not been fully utilized each year. Legislation allows us to keep those funds in a reserve account for the same purpose, but a defined purpose. Again, it has to be used for ALC-defined purposes, those ADM generating revenue, that ADM generating revenue. So we've identified that as a source to fund, we're hoping, a three-year model. Our model's three years to get them to full sustainability where the number of students they have enrolled is generating enough revenue to support the expenses that are being incurred there to support their, their program. We know that, that gap is going to lessen the further out we get because there's going to be a point, we're going to be able to build some enrollment before we really add staff. And then there'll be a point where again, we're going to kind of flip that, we'll add some staff and then we'll build that enrollment back up again. So it's, you know, they, they, they will work in parallel, but then there will be some fluctuation throughout that course of that three-year. But our model is pretty, I, I'm pretty confident in our model that we, we certainly have enough reserve funding to take care of any shortages, but remember their students will always be generating revenue as well. So it's not as though any reserves that we have have to, has to foot one hundred percent of, of the costs. It's simply a, a gap filler based on the, the number enrolee, number enrolled students they have.
Any other questions or comments, board members? Well, thank you very much. Not only for the presentation, but for your passion and for clearly how much you care about, about especially this group of students. So we'll be excited to hear as you progress.
Thank you.
Our next item is a monitoring item, seven point one, American Indian education update from staff. Superintendent Pekel?
Thank you very much. It is exciting to ask our executive director of Equity and Engagement, Will Ruffin, the second, to come on up. And we have Amelia Cordell and Tucker Quinton who are our liaisons to give the board and others who are interested an update on the amazing work that they've been doing on behalf of our Native American students. I did ask Will to briefly lead off with a brief update for something that has been of some interest regarding the selection of a mascot at our new middle school, Dakota. And I would suggest that while we touch base on that relatively briefly, we make sure that we stay focused on the bigger picture that Amelia and Tucker are ready to provide the board members with an update on, but we know this is the first board meeting since some of that information was shared with Dakota families and so we wanted to give Will and perhaps Amelia and Tucker, if they're so inclined, a chance to touch on that issue. So thank you.
Perfect. Members of the board, Superintendent Pekel, thank you for having us here again. It's always a pleasure to have the team up here with me. Like Superintendent Pekel said, I just want to take a brief moment to acknowledge the letter that went out to the Dakota Middle School community last week about the change in the mascot. As we all know, state legislature said that any use of American Indian mascots must be changed. And so in short, the mascot, or the state defines mascot as any human or any non-human animal or object that may represent the school or a school team. And with the Dakota being a bison, which is an animal, but it also is important to the culture of the indigenous people of this land, so therefore it qualified and we must change the mascot. We did apply for an exception and the exception was denied. But I think it's more than just a compliance issue for RPS. It's about doing the right thing and doing the right thing for the right reasons. So if there was even one tribe, which there were, that denied the exception, then we need to honor their request and we need to change the mascot. It's not for us to debate if it's right or if it's wrong. We need to just honor their request and change it. Not because it's the law, but because it's the right thing to do. I would really like for the conversation about the mascot not to overshadow the great work that Amelia has been leading us through with Tucker's assistance because that's where our focus should be, on the progress that we're making in American Indian education and not so much the changing of the school mascot. So with that, I would like to turn it over to Amelia and Tucker for their update.
We'll talk about it in our update a little bit more, but right now we're going to keep going forward. So I'm Amelia Cordell. You guys know me. I'm the coordinator now of American Indian Ed as of December, so thank you for that.
Yes, and Tucker Quinton, part-time Native American liaison.
It's going to be an update of what, kind of what we've been doing, our goals, all the fun things. So these are kind of our main goals for the year. Years moving forward, professional development for staff, just creating more opportunities to collaborate with district leadership, increase student connections, expand community collaborations, resources in all school buildings and increase student achievement and graduation rates. So this is one of a picture from our Indigenous Peoples' Day. We got, we were able to get our, some of our middle school and high school indigenous students together. And we went down to Peace Plaza after spending the morning together just in circle and eating and talking about their plans and what it means to be indigenous here in Rochester.
And I might add, this was the first time that we gathered all the secondary students from all of our schools together to have that face-to-face contact.
Because we have groups at the individual buildings, but this was the first time we actually got to bring them together across the district. So they definitely loved it, so it is in our plans to do more of that in the future.
So the work we've been doing falls into these different areas. Student interaction, that, that's our main goal, is connecting with our students, seeing what supports they need and, and also providing some cultural identity work with them. need, and, and also providing some cultural identity work with them. Of course, we meet monthly with our American Indian Parent Advisory Committee. You'll hear more from them later in an upcoming meeting. Staff development, in fact, we just did a presentation yesterday at the professional development workshops in the afternoon, and that went very well. We had, I think, around 100 people.
That's awesome.
Two different sessions, so it was really good. And we continue to work on developing future staff development sessions that will help the work in our district, as well as some of the new state mandates that are coming up. And then we have monthly family events as well, where we get families together and do cultural activities, as well as connecting with other organizations in our community. And then Amelia and I are continuing to develop ourselves and our skills and knowledge to support the work.
So, student interactions, like I said, we do monthly visits, one-on-one. I have large, I mostly work with elementary students, because that's my expertise. Tucker works with secondary, because that's his. So, I meet with my students in my little group at each school. So, like Franklin, for example, has about 12 indigenous students. We get all 12 together once a month. And this month, we talked about the grandfather teaching of love, because it's February. And we just really talked about what the eagle meant and why it represents love. And then we did an activity, and then they got to go home and talk about it, and then incorporated some of the language as well at an elementary level. I also do one-on-one visits with my students as needed. I'll do some home visits. We have our Indigenous Peoples' Day gathering of secondary students. We haven't done a lot of field trips, but it is in the plans moving forward, working with community ed and those after-school programs, to get more of those happening to like Bedotei, Learning From Place, the museum up in Shakopee, Pipestone, Prairie Island, those kind of field trips. This is one of our kiddos, when Peggy Flanagan was here. I initially just had that middle picture up, but everybody was like, what's going on? But they were taking a selfie together. That's what was happening. And then on the far side, we had, we were able to bring down a drum group and some dancers from the cities to just kind of talk about the different powwow dances, and where they came from, and the history behind them. And then we got to get the families involved as well. Since we are urban, up here in the north, we do have powwow, but all of our students know what that looks and feels like. Even if they are indigenous, they might not have been part of that powwow culture. So, it is just another opportunity to teach them and get them involved, and hear those drums if they haven't been able to hear them.
Yeah, at our AIPAC meetings, as I know some of you have visited, and you're welcome to come whenever we meet, one of the things, we are primarily funded through grants, both a state and a federal grant. So, we, we do keep the committee updated on where we are with our budget and plans and communication with those grants. We, we spend time just listening to the parents and students about their experience in the schools, what's working, what challenges they might have, and how we can support them. And then, anytime we plan activities, whether it be a family event, or professional development, or curriculum work we're doing, we try to give them an update, to let them know what's happening, and how we can contribute, and then getting input from them on some direction for doing that. We also have had some great guests come to our meetings in other community organizations, and being very supportive of us and the work, and wanting to make that connection. In fact, we probably get emails weekly asking for some input, because there are very few Native people in the community that are, I guess, able to provide some inside cultural information. People want to recognize Native culture in the area, but they're always not, they're not always sure how to do that. So, we do get requests giving, asking for our input on that.
And just for a couple of examples, a dance teacher had an idea of doing one of the creation stories for their spring debut. So, they asked AIPAC their thoughts on how they should do that going forward, if it was appropriate or not. So, then AIPAC gave them some suggestions, like reach out to the tribe's creation, see if it's okay to do that, have like an indigenous leader or dancer be there with you, or have an indigenous person read the story while your people are performing it, or just giving them ideas and things like that throughout the community, and the History Center, the Art Center. Just more people are reaching out and asking questions, which is great. Here's some more pictures. This is, we all know, beautiful Lori there. She was at our Indigenous Peoples' Day, and she was in her trinkle dress and danced for everybody to get some of that healing. And then our next picture was our quilts that we do for our graduation powwow, which is going to be May 4th this year. Might be a little bit Star Wars-themed. But then also, May 5th is also our, the recognition day for murdered and missing indigenous people. So, it's kind of the Star Wars, but also a little serious as well. But then the main event is honoring our graduates, of course. And then this summer slash fall, we got our medicinal garden going at Dakota. It's very new, and it's going to take a lot of work. This was just kind of phase one. But it is going to offer many opportunities, not just for our indigenous students, but for all of our students here in RPS about learning about the different plants that the Dakota people specifically used. That's what is in that garden. So, it has a traditional tobacco, it has the cedar, the sage. We didn't put sweetgrass in there, because it is aggressive, and it is invasive. But we do plan to put some on the hillside by Dakota as well. So, staff development, like Tucker said, we did have our, our Native Students Course optional this year. Plans moving forward, we're going to, we're kind of remapping it to make it look nice on the, so that you can actually do it nicely, and not just kind of have that accountability factor. There'll be a real accountability factor years going forward. Yesterday, Tucker and I did our Indigenous Ways of Learning PD, where we had 100 people there. A lot of it, we know, was the relicensure requirements, but also because there are people, a lot of staff in the district, that do want to know how to better help our indigenous students. And that was very relevant yesterday, which was really nice to see. Lots of classroom collaborations. It's another thing, we get emails almost daily about coming to present to a classroom, or asking for resources. Lots of work with restorative practices, talking about the history behind it, mostly about where they come from, their circle process, about how you can't restore something if you don't have that relationship. And then the Indigenous Peoples' Day, Native American Heritage Month resources that we sent out to staff. We know a lot of the time, our teachers are overwhelmed, and they do want us to give things that they could just take and implement right away. But we're also making our teachers accountable as well. Like, we'll give you some things, but you are going to have to put in some work and some time to find these resources. But since now it's a statute, we are gonna, not just us, but the state also is giving resources as well to help teachers out to meet those requirements.
And then we do try to work closely with department leadership. And fortunately for me, Amelia as coordinator gets to do a lot of that committee work. But I do some as well. So, you can see a list here of many of the groups we're working with, and trying to make sure that indigenous education is implemented in all of these from the beginning, not as an afterthought, but really the ground level, building those connections and those ideas into the work that's moving forward.
Could you say a little more about how we're going to be able to increase the accountability for the Native Students Course, just what that means in practice?
What that means in practice is usually, right now, a teacher could just click through the PowerPoint and check the box saying that they did the PD. But if we make it an actual course, like Blood Pathogens, for example, where you stop and answer questions in between, that has more accountability factor, making sure that our teachers are actually taking in the resources, answering those questions, and reflecting as well.
Yeah, that's great.
Some other things that we brought, working with Will and Equity Engagement Department and the Music Department, we were able to bring Keith Sacola down. I know he had an amazing time with kids and families. I know his concert was a little meek, because it was our first. Yeah, the, the.
He was working with our music teachers and some of our students. So, I think we can do better as far as communicating and publicizing the events, we can get more people there.
And it was the first night after you came out with the, was it the 12?
The redesign?
Yes, the redesign, thank you.
It was a very happy night.
It was a happy night.
People were having parties all over the city.
I mean, we were partying with Keith Sacola, so. But that was also the same night as that.
Yeah, that was unfortunate.
But he was amazing, and it was fun. Then that was a drum group and the dancers that we brought down from the cities. The family community connections, we have a lot, we try to do family events at least once a month. This month, we utilized the Slice Kitchen at Dakota, where we had fried bread February. So, our families came and shared different fried bread recipes, and we made different ones. And I really had to make sure that the ventilation system was going, because as, if you make fried bread, you have to use oil. So, it does get a little smoky, but luckily, everything was beautiful. We have the Dakota Medicine Garden. Our next, our plan for the Dakota Kitchen was, once a month now until the end of the year, we have it. So, our next thing is de-colonizing the diet. So, we are, we just bought the cookbook from Sean Sherman before he was this big old chef. He was supposed to come down here pre-COVID, but now he just gave us materials where we get to present his stuff for him. So, that's kind of our next family kitchen night at Dakota. And then it's going to be like Mark, or April's going to be like wild rice, how can we incorporate that into our meal? And then a last kind of potlatch meal, where they bring an item of their culture that might be different than the rest of us. We have back-to-school family dinners. We had a solstice night in December. Keith Sacola, Drum and Dance troupe. April, we really hit powwow prep, especially for our seniors, if they want to make a ribbon skirt, or learn how to dance at the powwow. We also offer materials for family to make regalia. And we're working with community ed to make hand drums this year as well, because we usually have a hand drum contest. So, then students can make a hand drum and try their best, see, and just get that out there. And then Indigenous Peoples' Day at Peace Plaza was kind of a community event. So, here's a couple pictures from fried bread night.
Oh, that looks so good. I know, I'm hungry.
You can't really tell.
That would be the invitation we'd like next time.
Yes. And then we also had, my family, we called them Sue Dogs, but it's a hot dog inside of a fried bread. But I also heard other families call it like a prairie dog, or this kind of thing. And then the other picture is our I-Cape, our Indigenous Carrot Empowerment Group. We have, it's a small group. We usually have about four or five families that come. We're over halfway through the process now. They are, you can start to see that they are getting empowered, asking questions about the standards, and where can I find these things. So, it is really cool to see these parents open up as well. And they're also parents that I don't always get to work with, because they're not a part of AIPAC. So, it's also pulling in more parents that way as well.
Yeah, again, just looking back on things that we've done so far this year, when we did plant the garden, we had a lot of help from Rochester Master Gardeners Groups, who came in and not only helped us plant, but helped us organize and order everything beforehand. We work closely with Merge Program at Mayo Clinic. We had a visitor from Cradle to Career last month at our meeting, and gave us some information and listened to our family needs. The History Center has reached out to help ask for some help in their programming. Amelia has been working with the Art Center and Luther College. We've also been reaching out to surrounding school districts who don't have an Indian Ed program, because we know we have some families there, and we have made some connections. And, and one family comes very regularly from Stuartville, so that's nice. Also Rochester DEI Program, we participate in that. Spark Museum has really been supportive of us in having family nights for our families as well. I don't know, I forgot about the library, what you were doing with that.
I'm just working with them about, they're going to have a Star Knowledge Night, so just working with them and Mayo with the Planetarium. Yeah, even teachers in Stuartville, Brian, have asked me to come out and talk to their classrooms. We invite them to our graduation powwow as well. We did have two EODA seniors last year join us, and got to be recognized. So, just kind of opening that up to our smaller communities that do have indigenous populations, just to make sure that they feel warm and welcome here, too. And parents are getting empowered, too. Like our parent in Stuartville, like she comes and can be compressed, because they do feel isolated, like the only indigenous people out there. And then the Mayo-Dakota Merge, they're the one that gave us $10,000 for the Dakota Medicinal Garden. And they also fund a lot of our powwow events, too. And we do have two wonderful ladies back here. Let's help with that. So, here's the picture from powwow last year. And then our corner was, is our circle at our Indigenous Peoples' Day, where our students just sat in circle and answered questions, and really just got to enjoy being together. So, professional development, this is both mostly what Tucker and I have done to better our professional.
Yeah. So, some of this, we have gone to receive information, and some we have also presented at other conferences, especially the National Indian Education Association. We both did presentations. Fortunately, they got scheduled at the exact same time, so we couldn't go to each other's. Then the Minnesota Indian Education Association is every spring, and so we'll be going to that as well. And Amelia did submit a proposal to present there as well. In addition to that, we have gone to workshops on restorative practices. Next week, we're going, is that next week? Yeah, already, to the Indigenous Language Conference over at Prairie Island. We attended a, kind of a, this Learning from Bedotei, I don't know if you've heard of this or not, it's in conjunction with Minnesota Humanity Center. And it takes you to this sacred place for the Dakota people, where the Minnesota River and the Mississippi River meet. And they talk about the history there, and the importance of it, and their creation stories. And just to be there and hear those stories is very exciting and very moving, just to be in that sacred place. The Office of Indian Ed has now put out a one-hour training to also help meet the licensure requirements. We've taken that course, it's an online course that anybody can take, and got some ideas from that to help us with our trainings here. Let's see. Oh, Understand Native Minnesota Educator Academy. This is something that the Shakopee-Midwacuden community is putting together, and it's just a one-day free event for any educator in Minnesota to come and learn more about indigenous education, and especially Dakota history and culture.
It's actually tomorrow, and I get to go, so I'm excited.
Education Minnesota has reached out to me, asking for some input on programs that they're doing. And then the last two things are kind of my side events that I've been working on. Actually, when I presented at the National Indian Ed Conference last October in Albuquerque, I did that with my daughter, Emily. She teaches at a school in Salt Lake City, Roland Hall. So, on my way to Albuquerque, I stopped in Salt Lake City, and we did a presentation at her school, kind of in preparation for doing it at the NIA. So, that was very rewarding to be there. So that was very rewarding to be there at her school and to visit my grandchildren's classes as well. Uh, and then I have been working with the American Federation of Teachers, um, who reached out to me to be on a task force, that Education International has put together. Uh, they have a convention, uh, this summer in July. And they're, uh, proposing a new Indigenous Peoples' Resolution, Indigenous Peoples' Rights Resolution. So I was on the task force that, that helped write that. And it's been going through the approval channels and it's like it's ready to be presented at the convention this summer. And I think I'm gonna get to go, it's in Buenos Aires, and help present that resolution.
He's a global presenter and who I wanna be when I grow up. So this is just our pictures from NIEA, Tucker and Emily and myself. Wanna talk about your presentation?
Well, if you remember last year, uh, we gave you, uh, a sheet of foundational characteristics of indigenous education. And we've been working with that, um, idea to help teachers, um, kind of change their mindset or understand what those things are and how they might be incorporated into any classroom situation. So that's primarily what Emily and I did there, um, at NIEA. And then, um, we kind of used that as a basis for our presentation yesterday as well.
And then mine was more on fostering identity, how teachers can do that for especially our students in urban settings. Like here in Rochester, like while we do have 216 indigenous students, they come from over 45 different nations. So how can we foster identity when our students come from all over the place? So it's really just giving teachers some tools to, to do that. So I know there's a lot on this slide, um, but this was last legislation, they did pass 24 statutes just for American Indian Ed. I know we did get some questions about what we are doing. We are addressing all of them, there isn't one that RPS hasn't started addressing. There are six that are in process, that aren't completely there, but most of the rest are coming state down. Recent one was Dedicated American Indian Ed Coroner, so that was my title change. Um, the one, uh, one of them that we are working on and that's in the process is since we do have over 100 indigenous students, we do need to offer a culture and language class. So Tucker and I, Natalia, AIPAC, Curriculum and, and all of them are coming together. We do have the class created, but now we get to work with AIPAC to kind of see what that class is gonna offer, what it looks like. And then also on here, there's the Language Revitalization Grant. So we did apply for that to help with this class as well, it's a three-year grant. Just to help with the licensure and the culture piece. The Share Time Enrollment, that's from the state, the data sharing with tribal nations. That one just means that my federally recognized students, if a nation asks for the data, then we give it to them. Uh, right, a lot of them are about the aid, just the amounts, making sure, talking about how they are increasing and then talking about the new rollover process as well. If we didn't spend all of our state grant, then it kind of rolls over to the next year, but it's, we only get half of what was rolled over. Indigenous Peoples' Day, it's requirement that at least one hour of the school program must be focused on indigenous people that day, it could be professional development, it could be just talking about the sovereignty. But each entity or school has to have one hour of that. We did ask more for that this year of our teachers, we said each teacher will talk about something indigenous on Indigenous Peoples' Day. And we did get, we did send out a form afterwards to see how that went. And we are still in the process of using that to plan for Indigenous Peoples' Day next year 'cause now we know what teachers want and need, what they liked or didn't like. Another one that's in the process is Indigenous Education for All, uh, but that's coming from MDE. So right now, we're just kind of doing the waiting game to see. I know they just finished their poll with the native families across Minnesota to see what they would like. And then that was their next process. The big one is we're in the process now of the mascot. And we're really just respecting the nation's use of their sovereignty, and they said no. Even though what we, the way that we did the mascot was respectful, but like Will said, it is an animal that was very sacred to the indigenous people. It was used in forms of genocide, so we will respect their decision. We do have a plan moving forward. Mom Sue and I and Will met, talked about plans going forward. I reached out to TNEC, um, which is the Tribal Nation Education Committee. And is our next, talking about our second choice last year, if you remember, was the Stars, to see if that is okay. So once I get a response from them, we will move forward in finding an artist. But now I do know a couple of Dakota artists now. So we have things in the works, but if they say no to the Stars, then we'll take it back to AIPAC, Indigenous Families, Dakota Community, and kind of start there again. Um, so right now, we are kind of waiting, but once we get that answer, um, our plan is to have a new design and everything ready by the start of our next school year. According to the statute, we do have until 2025, uh, but we would rather start the year, the next school year fresh. Tribal Regalia at graduation, um, we did that last year, so that one, we're doing great. Sacred Tobacco, um, that's why we can have it in our garden, that's why students, that means students can wear it in like a medicine pouch. That doesn't mean that a student can smoke the tobacco, but it means that they can have it on their person and use it to pray in that way. Standards Development, that one's coming from the state, um, so that one's still in process. The Embedded Indigenous Education with the Ethnic Studies, they're still working on that too, but it will come down to us. So that one's in process. Uh, the Teacher Program is in process, that's coming from the state. The grant goes with that, we talked about the aid already. The Student Definition, we've been doing that from the beginning. The, our AIPAC has, we go over the bylaws and the state statute, um, every two years. So we are still, we were doing this before the statute came out already, so that was good. Just kind of making sure that all of our members are either of a native community, our parents and guardians, and all of our boarding members, um, are indigenous. And then the other, the only other one that is in process is the Culture Relicensure Renewal. We are planning, that's what Tucker was talking about, our future PD plans, 'cause we know many of our teachers are gonna need this. Um, so yesterday, we did meet that requirement with 100 teachers, 'cause right now, they do only need the one hour. Uh, but moving forward, they will need eight hours of American Indian Ed for relicensure. But again, that's coming from the state. And then once they give us those final things, we can start with the PD process and what that looks and feels like. But again, a lot of these statutes, I know there's a lot, but most of them are things that we're already doing. And now we just have to. Are there any questions?
Board members.
Well, I'm really glad, um, and grateful, Amelia, that we went through those, uh, 24 state statutes because it was a lot. And I, I remember when I looked at them, I did think, well, we are already doing this. So I think it's a testament to the work that you all have done in the past few years to think ahead. Um, I think both your presentations, you know, outside of RPS and the information you're gathering there has brought a lot of great things back to the district that you haven't hesitated to implement. Um, I'd be curious to hear, um, what other opportunities you're thinking about. I know you talked about Indigenous Peoples' Day, bringing the, the students, um, together across the district. Because we have so few, um, Native American students, how, how are they, are, are they feeling other ways to be connected other than, you know, major holidays like that? Or, um, how are you seeing that, those connections happening for our students across the district?
It's definitely a need, especially at the secondary and, and middle school level. We are planning to do another one of those in the spring, but eventually hoping it'll kind of look like Student School Board. So maybe not monthly, but quarterly, bringing in those students together. Right now, it has only been the one time and we just, right now, um, and then the individual schools, we do once a month.
Dr. Martha.
Uh, just wanted to acknowledge, um, how very far you have come. Thank you to the Smith Sisters out there. Um, and you've been a part of this, uh, for such a long period of time. I don't want to start doing shout-outs, but Tucker, you know, uh, but to be a part of the board and to see the growth and, but more importantly than the program aspects, just to see the students, to, to see their sense of joy and identity. That must really, uh, warm your hearts because in many ways, that's what it's about, allowing them to see themselves not as the other, but a part of something much larger. And thank you also for, uh, calling out the fact that, uh, the students which are a part of RPS schools are representative of 45 nations. Could very well have been hundreds of nations, but 45, and that's significant. And, and the more you share, the more you educate us, and I believe the community at large. So please keep up the good work, whether the state requires it or not, you know, please keep up the good work, thank you.
Dr. Garcia.
I just have a question, well, first of all, thank you for all the work you're doing. And I know we talked about this in a study session, and maybe not everybody watches our study sessions. Could you give like a little sneak peek into what the Culture and Language Class looks like? Are you at liberty to do that?
So the language piece is a challenge. We are not native speakers, thank you to the boarding school history and our families. We don't know of any local fluent speakers, and it's not necessarily easy to get licensed to be a cultural teacher. So for the first year of the class, we want to introduce the language, both Dakota and Inishinaabe. And, um, give students a feeling of what those, why those words are important and why that language is important, um, in our communities. So that's something that we're gonna have to really look at going forward if we will ever want to have a separate language class. How we can do that and maybe recruit someone to come and teach here. So for that first part, for the, for our first year, that will be an introductory piece and not something we're gonna try to make a class on its own and help students become fluent by any means. Saying that, um, we also want to keep the focus of the class on Minnesota tribes, Dakota and Inishinaabe. And give them both cultural, um, historical and current cultural information, so that it's not a history class, right? We also feel it's important to give a, a broad overview of native history, uh, in the United States and what that means here in Minnesota today. But, um, I think we really want the focus to be understanding the history, to see what's happening in the Dakota and Inishinaabe nations today and how we can connect with that.
And who will it be open to?
Uh, any secondary student, high school student, um, it was open registration, there's no prerequisites or anything like that. So anyone could register and I, I don't know what the numbers are.
It's currently about 23 students registered so far, um, 10 at Centry, eight or so at John Marshall, and then another, uh, five or so at Mayo, so we're getting there.
That's exciting, I would absolutely enroll if I was a secondary student. Um, and I just want to acknowledge, um, and validate how, how difficult yet how well you both seem to be recognizing, like even though the students come from 45 different nations, how you're able to create community but also honor their individuality, and I think that's so important. And to be able to run a class like this to honor Minnesota nations while also incorporating, you know, the lived experience of the other students, I think that is so important, I really appreciate all the work you're doing, thank you.
I just can't resist the, the plug, it's not Dakota, but if anybody, um, I still call it Twitter and always will. But if you follow Anton Troyer, who's a professor of Ajibwe at Bemidji State, he does, um, Ajibwe Word of the Day. Yes. Um, and it's such a beautiful language and it's one every day, and he picks very, like, not always practical words, but that sound great, like sword was the other day. Um, and so if you want to just have like a brief taste, and every time I think about it, it's, I mean, and you spoke briefly to the huge rupture in generations of access to language. So when you see that coming back, it's really, it's exciting. So I mean, we want to lean in with you to finding some ways to do that, uh, here.
Even what I told teachers yesterday, it's like, we've all been speaking Dakota, if you live in Minnesota, just really badly.
Yeah.
Everybody speaks a little bit of Dakota, just not very well.
Yeah, that's a great way to put it.
Any other questions or comments, board members?
Well, thank you very much, and we'll look forward to hearing from the AIPAC in a few weeks. Board members, we have, uh, one next major agenda item, would you like to take a break? I'm, yes? Yes? A brief break, okay.
No, I said it's gonna be a brief item.
Oh, it's gonna be a brief item?
Unless board members want to have a.
No break. Then let's go forward. Our next item is a prep for action item, 2015 Operating Levy Renewal. Uh, Superintendent Pecat.
Thank you Chair Nathan, and, uh, our Chief of Minister of Officer John Carlson is now going to prove me right that our, our overview of this item is gonna be brief. Now, should board members want to talk further about it, we certainly are glad to. But this is a, a relatively straightforward matter that I, uh, have long since informed board members I'd be bringing before you. And so here is John to give you an overview of the action that we're hoping this board will elect to take.
Great, thank you Superintendent Pecat and Chair Nathan. So as Superintendent said, this is a very brief update about, um, some new power that you do have, which would be to renew the 2015 Operating Levy one time. Uh, the 2023 legislature gave you that ability to do that, um, one time per operating referendum. You may not add to it, you may not increase property taxes, but you can maintain what's there for the exact same terms that the voters put in place, um, previously. Uh, so it's important to note, this is not raising taxes, this is continuing on funding that we already have. This funding provides about $17 million per year. And while we're not required to track exactly how we're spending it on, um, it's used for, um, any general fund purpose that we're allowed to use, similar to general education aid. But thinking about $17 million, if we did not have this funding, um, that equates to about 160 full-time positions that would need to be cut. So you could think of that, um, sometimes Edison gets a bad rap for, um, having, uh, too many people working here. Uh, but you could, you could get rid of all of Edison and you would still need to go out into the school buildings and cut another 40 positions. So that's the, the magnitude of what this funding is paying for. Your options are to let the levy expire or to renew this. This is not an emergency, you have time to, uh, think this through. Um, but we, um, do recommend that you, uh, approve the renewal. Um, it will provide us some stability in our forecasting and planning as we move ahead. Um, if you do not renew it, um, the funding would expire after school year 2025-26.
And as you noted, Madam Chair, this is in the prep for action category, so it's, uh, one reason why I'm was confident, relatively confident, we could have a relatively brief item tonight, as we are not asking you to take any action at this time.
And it would be scheduled for action on the March 19th meeting, so we have a few weeks between now and when we would take action. Board members, any questions or, um, additional information you may want before, um, or in the interim period before we take action? Hearing none? Thank you.
John.
Should we clap for John too?
On 9.1 is our ABCDs.
Um, number nine point one is our A-B-C-D. So the current version of the A-B-C-D is available and as it is at every school board meeting. Are there any agenda items board members would like to raise for consideration for a future agenda? Hearing none. Our upcoming board meeting dates at uh March 19th, um at 5:30, we have a regular meeting. March 26th at 5:30, we have a study session. March 9th at 5:30, we have a regular meeting and, I'm sorry, April 9th, 5:30, we have a regular meeting. And April 16th at 5:30, we have a study session. If you're wondering why, we are skipping a week for a meeting. We are required to not have a school board meeting on the night of uh the presidential primary on uh March 5th. And hearing no other business, this meeting is adjourned at 7:25 PM.